Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for joining.
Recording in progress.
Good evening. Tonight is the Tuesday, October 18th Louisville City Council meeting. I'm Mayor Ashley Stolzmann. I'll call the meeting to order and I'll ask our city clerk if we could please have a roll call.
Mayor Stolzmann?
Here.
Mayor Protim Maloney?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Dickinson? Councilmember Fahey?
Here.
Councilmember Lay?
Here.
Councilmember Most?
Here.
Thank you, everyone. Will you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you, everyone. Could I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Recording stop.
Aye.
Recording in progress.
Aye.
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 Thank you. That takes us to our public comment period for items that are not on our agenda or items that are only appearing on our consent agenda. Are there any public comments of that nature this evening? Our first speaker on comments on items that are not on our agenda is Melissa Klein.
Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can. Yes.
Hi, my name is Melissa. I've been a Colorado resident for a little over two years. I wanted to use my time to talk about ADUs and why they should be allowed. Currently, the municipal code does not permit ADUs. However, residents could benefit if ADUs were allowed by right on single-family properties as long as the ADUs fall within a certain set of guidelines. ADUs, among other things, tend to increase housing affordability, create more variety in housing options, and enable older residents to age in place. As housing becomes less affordable and eviction moratoriums are lifted, the demand for more housing options has increased. ADUs give renters more options for attainable and affordable housing as ADUs tend to be affordable by design. Some concerns around ADU construction usually have to do with parking issues that ADUs could bring. However, there's no evidence that ADUs cause parking problems. Another fear some people have is that allowing property owners to construct ADUs will decrease property values. However, studies have shown that ADUs actually have a positive impact on property values. Allowing ADUs by right for single-family homes, coupled with relaxed restrictions, would give residents more options for affordable housing. Some of these relaxed restrictions could include waiving occupancy requirements for owners, removing stringent design standards, and waiving development fees if the ADU is made available to low-income households or if it's not going to be used as a short-term rental. While ADUs can't solve all housing affordability and demand problems, they can be a part of the solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on items not on our agenda? All right, seeing none, that takes us to our consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Thank you, Mayor. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
There a second?
Second.
Any discussion of the consent agenda this evening? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everyone. The consent agenda is approved. That takes us to our council informational comments on pertinent items not on our agenda. Any council comments? Councilmember Brown?
Here. I just want to say thank you to our staff and to the community. I was really excited to see the work of the Front Street Sidewalk nearly completed, if not completed, looks complete to me. I think the work just went really well and it looks really great. And I also just want to thank the Revitalization Commission, Councilmember Lay, and, you know, just everyone that worked on that particular project. It's really a big improvement to that area. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other council member comments? Seeing none, that takes us to our city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have two items. In your packet, you have the Q3 Revitalization Commission update as well as a Q3 Economic Vitality Strategic Plan Scorecard. If you have any question?
Questions.
Austin's here. In person.
Any questions from folks? Mayor Protim Maloney?
I was thinking we were going to have a presentation, so I was formulating my questions. Well, I mean, first off, I really appreciate the report for the Revitalization Commission. And I really appreciate the fact in September that we, as a council, were able to meet with them. It's something that we probably need to do at least once a year to ensure that the alignment of the policymakers on council are reflected in a lot of the things that Revitalization Commission does. I also appreciate the fact that we really have a solid budget and a budget that reflects directions. And I think that is always an extremely important thing. So with that, I really don't have any other comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, City Manager Durbin, anything else? Thank you, everyone. That takes us to our first item of regular business this evening. Discussion direction of the city manager's proposed 2023 to 2024 operating and capital budget, our 2023 to 2028 capital improvement plan, and our 2023 to 2028 long-term financial plan. This is our public hearing as advertised in the Daily Camera. I'll open the public hearing and ask the city manager for a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sorry, I introduced them at the same time, asking for comments, but if we need to go back and reconsider that, we absolutely can. Perfect.
Ready? Great. So I'll start off with just a high-level overview. As I said a couple meetings ago, the approach that we're taking with the budget this year is conservative. The city's financial position today is a lot different than it was on December 29th, if you will, of 2021. We've got a lot of capital projects, repairs of infrastructure and so forth. And we are looking to make sure that we continue to operate all of our programs, all of our services, at the same level of service and do what we do today well. So there are not a lot of new projects in there. It's my hope that as we go forward, and my expectation actually as we go forward, that we'll be better off down the road than it looks right now. So I think at this point, though, the right thing to do is to be conservative. We need to make sure that we can maintain the fiscal sustainability of the organization so we can continue to operate. And with that, you've heard from us before, the proposed budget was presented. And we'll just run through some of the changes we've made since the last time you saw the budget. And Megan's going to start with those.
Thank you, City Manager Durbin. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Just wanted to share some of the changes that have been made since our last discussion a couple of weeks ago. Some based on council direction and others have been kind of amendments or changes that we've made due to some other things that are at play. So first, I wanted to mention funding for the arts in the Louisville Cultural Council, a request that came from council members regarding additional funding. So we've provided in the packet for you an overview of the funding that is provided, been provided in 2022 and 2023 that gives you kind of a holistic view of the funding that we're providing for our arts, community programming, and grants. And so, as you can see, we've been providing about $50,000 for the past few years in these categories of arts programming grants, opportunity programming, and the Louisville Cultural Council. And so, based on your recommendation, we're proposing an additional $20,000 for the Cultural Council general budget. And we, after talking with staff and hearing from the recommendations from the LCC, we think this will support the arts and events at the current level. And there are some plans to rotate more events throughout the city, so not just have them located sort of centrally in the downtown area. And this additional funding will allow us to support the costs associated with having kind of a similar number of events, but the same sort of level of acts and activities located throughout the city. So in addition, we have, through the discussions with the LRC, which City Manager Durbin will talk about shortly, we are providing some additional funding for public arts in that area. So we've added $50,000 for drone flight activities as requested. And we're going to be kind of looking at what the plan might be for the best approach to develop this program, to look at some of the city's goals that we might have around kind of aerial imagery and aerial flights. So we'll be looking at that. I'm going to turn it over to Parks, Rec, and Open Space Director Blackmore, Adam Blackmore, to talk in a little bit more detail about the Rec Center renewal and replacement questions.
Thank you, Megan. Mayor, council, thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. In your packet, there's a memo outlining a number of topics related to renewal and replacement. I'd just like to give you a brief, high-level overview of those. The Recreation Fund, as you're aware, is a separate fund meant for operating and maintenance of our Recreation and Senior Center and Memory Square Pool. In 2018, in correlation with the bond passing for the expansion of the center, staff, council, and the Finance Committee were able to develop a pretty extensive renewal and replacement schedule. That schedule is reviewed annually. It's brought by staff to the Finance Committee for approval on an annual basis. It's also tied into the reserve requirements of the funds and ensuring that it has a healthy reserve going forward as outlined in the financial policies. As far as specific elements of renewal and replace for the Rec Center, Senior Center, and Memory Square Pool, those pieces of equipment and different components of the building are all given a viable life cycle, an estimated life cycle. For how long they would be functional, safe, maintained at a level that would be expected of our residents. That renewal and replace schedule and those lifespans with an inflator for expenses and every inflator with revenues and an inflator with our anticipated cost recovery all feed into our renew and replace schedule and how we budget accordingly. An example would be, we do have quarterly maintenance contracted. So if a treadmill, for example, is meant to get three years or a certain number of miles, we evaluate the condition of that treadmill with our contracted maintenance company to determine if it's at its life expectancy, if there's any warranty left on that, depending on... Usually, that would be miles. So if we have a three-year warranty, gets to 20,000 miles after two years, we would evaluate if we should replace as part of a warranty process, if there's wear and tear, or if we have life left in that unit. Again, that includes not just recreation and fitness equipment and furniture and so forth. It also includes the building itself, which, as you'll see in this year's proposed budget, there's roof replacements. There's also some HVAC work. It also includes memory square pools and things like heaters, filters, that kind of stuff, pumps, normal kind of renew and replacement kind of thing. So that's where, again, it's a long-winded way of saying that we use that document that was created in 2018 and is evaluated annually to drive a lot of our operating decisions and our budget proposals.
Thank you, Director Blackmore. So a couple other changes that we made. So we did review the city property and liability insurance assumptions. The 23-24 budget already included a fairly conservative 20% increase in the insurance premium costs for 2023 and then a 10% increase in 2024. We did increase those further to 25% in 2023 and 2024 because, you know, we are hearing from our insurance broker and company that, you know, as we go through the renewal process, that we will be renewed. So we're feeling positive about that, but we also know that our claims history at this time, you know, may influence what our renewal looks like. So we're being, I think, extra conservative there in comparison to what we've done in the past. We also did review the sales tax information and discussed potential updates or modifications to the projections or the assumptions that we were using in our projections. And the Q3 sales tax information isn't available. It'll be posted the first week in November. So we, you know, won't have that at this time to integrate in to the discussion. But we did feel that even though the sales tax continues to be strong in kind of reviewing the economic indicators and some of what we're hearing both nationally and globally, that being conservative at this point was a good strategy. So we kept that in the assumptions that are in the packet in front of you. We also wanted to just share that all the impacts related to the Marshall Fire rebuilding use tax credit that were approved at the last meeting when we talked about the budget have been incorporated into the budget. And as you might recall, we did a kind of 100% assumption around those. So assuming that, you know, every home that rebuilds would be able to access the full use tax credit. So that, again, is a pretty conservative assumption. And then we will have Finance Committee review the financial reserve policies next year. So that'll be an opportunity for you to really talk about sort of that future potential climate disaster planning and if there's a need to make adjustments to the reserve based on what those experiences might look like and what we've learned from this experience. And we will come back to talk specifically about the Marshall Fire paving needs. So that's probably a discussion to have in and of itself. We typically try to come back, Director Cower, to provide kind of an overview of the paving, the pavement index and the plans. And so we can have kind of a comprehensive discussion about the paving plan and how the Marshall Fire rebuilding of the road and sidewalk infrastructure will fit into that plan. So I think I've covered everything. We will continue to come back and share regular updates. I think as we have in 2022, we've had more kind of budget adjustments than we typically do. And I think that'll probably be the case moving forward in 2023 as well as we get ongoing adjustments and information about our insurance and our FEMA funding as it continues to come in. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Deputy City Manager Davis. I still struggle with that. Sorry. Just the last few items for you. As you know, the Parks Department is working on a general maintenance and management plan that's coming along nicely. And we've added $100,000 to help fast-track implementation of that program next year. We've also added $265,000 for consulting contract for the city's internal decarbonization plan. I'm really thrilled with the contractor that staff has identified for this. And you'll see a contract coming before you in November for your consideration. We've updated the strategic plan, priority initiatives. And the last thing, the LRC met last week and reviewed and approved a budget that will be coming to you for your consideration at your next meeting. And I'm really pleased with their conversation. They basically approved funding a million two in capital improvement projects. What we did is we took some of the CIP work that had been proposed over four to six years and compressed all that. So with LRC funding, they could help us move that along quicker and get to the finish line faster. And then also, that, of course, helps with the city's, you know, general budget, if you will. And then to the... There's two other things in there. One, that they've added some funding for some additional staff support. So Rob and I are talking about what that looks like, and they'll consider that further over the coming months. And lastly, I think this was pretty neat. With the LCC request for additional funding, which aligned pretty well with the DCI, LCC Louisville Cultural Council, the DCI Downtown Colorado Incorporated consulting work, the strategic planning that they're doing with LRC, they had recommended that LRC consider doing some arts and cultural funding in the URA. And so there was a lot of good alignment there. And so we talked about that. We proposed that they consider some arts and culture funding. Of course, it can only be in the URA. They supported that, but they also were concerned about only providing funding for one of our 11 other boards and commissions. So they broadened the scope of that and changed the name of the line to Board and Commission URA Project Support and put $50,000 in there. So that could be things like trees from parks or, you know, other things that might, that might help dress up downtown or, you know, move those goals forward. So that was a pretty neat add, and I'm really happy with LRC for that work. And with that, we don't have any more presentation. We're happy to answer any questions. And I'm looking, I'm really excited to see the full room for the public hearing.
Thank you very much, City Manager Durbin. And so as this is our public hearing, we'll turn it over to the public at this time so we can get further input from the community on our proposed budget. And just to remind everyone, this isn't your only opportunity. You can email City Council. You can come to our future hearings as well, but we would love your input if there are any members of the public that would care to comment on the city manager's proposed budget. First, we have Josh Cooperman. And folks are welcome to fill out a sign-up card. And there are sign-up cards in the lobby if you'd like to comment. Or you can just come up to the dais. Once the previous commenter is finished, you'll have three minutes to tell us what you'd like to tell us. So just give us your name and then tell us what you'd like to. And folks online can raise their hand using the raise hand icon at the bottom of the panel. Mark, you're both online and in person. But you can still only comment once. So first, Josh, did you want to say something? Please.
Okay. At City Council's budget discussion on the 20th of September, Mayor Protim Maloney, I believe, if I remember correctly, made the very nice remark that setting the city's budget is not merely a necessary financial exercise, but much more so an aligning of the community's values and priorities with the city's spending. And I couldn't agree more. Our community and our city council highly values and prioritizes environmental sustainability. I believe that the city's budget could better reflect our commitments to environmental sustainability. I do not intend to suggest that the city's budget does not reflect our commitments to environmental sustainability. For instance, I am hugely supportive of the funding allocated towards municipal decarbonization. But I think that we could do better, especially given the urgency of the climate crisis. Now, I appreciate that much, if not most, of the city's budget must go towards the city's operations and that the Marshall Fire has significantly affected the city's budget. Still, I encourage City Council to find additional funding for sustainability initiatives whenever and wherever possible. For instance, there's a nice example coming up this Friday when the Economic Vitality Committee will discuss ways to integrate sustainability into its efforts and programs like the Business Assistance Program. Sustainability initiatives could and should find homes across all of the city's departments. Since staff in most departments do not have sustainability expertise, we currently rely on our sole sustainability coordinator, Kayla Betzel. While Kayla is doing a great job, I would say, one person cannot coordinate all of the sustainability initiatives that our city is and should be running. So I ask that City Council reconsider her request for an additional 0.5 FTE sustainability staff position. Such staffing would bring Louisville more into line with our neighboring municipalities, among which we should be a leader in environmental sustainability. How could we find funding for such a position? Well, I will largely leave that up to City Council, but I will make one suggestion, which I always make. How many thousands of dollars do we spend on mowing non-recreational turf? I don't know, but I bet it's a lot. And instead of making noise and dust and air pollution and greenhouse gas emissions, we could instead fund a sustainability position. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any other members of the public care to comment this evening? Mark Cathcart. And I don't know everyone in the audience's names, so some of you will have to fill out sign-up cards if you'd like to comment.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager, and staff. My name's Mark Cathcart. I'm from 1763 Sweet Clover Lane. I was delighted to hear while I rushed here down the street that the city manager's been able to agree with the LRC some potential additional funding for the Cultural Council, of which I am a member. I speak for myself tonight, though. And I'd want to remind you, as I did before, that public art is more than a budget and it's more than events. So even if we, even if we get additional fund, or the Cultural Council gets additional funding tonight, I would request that you consider carefully that it does need staff direction and priority to deliver public art. Public art is important in a city because it can help to create a sense of identity and community. It can also be used to beautify the environment. It can make a city more enjoyable to live in. Public art can also promote tourism and economic development. So, you know, as well, as well as good... My English is getting so bad now I live here. Although we do very well on events, and even if you decide to fund them tonight, we still do pretty poorly on public art. I'd like to thank you for considering any change in funding for the Cultural Council, but would want you to, would want to encourage you in your deliberations to give the city manager guidance on how you want the money spent and guidance to the city manager and staff about prioritization. You know, what I've found in my time on the Cultural Council is we don't ask for much public art. And when we raise our head above the parapet, it takes forever to get things done. We are never likely at the current rate and cadence to be asking for 10 or 12 or 15 pieces of art a year. It's usually one or two on a good year. So it would be nice to get some priority. I'm not asking for extra staff, but focus and priority. So thank you very much, council and staff. Thank you for your time and your service.
Thank you. Other members of the public care to comment this evening? And like I mentioned before, it's not people's last chance. So you can always email City Council, or our phone numbers are posted online to let us know other feedback. And we got a lot of really great emails in advance of the meeting, so I'd like to thank the community for that. Seeing no other public comments at this moment, we'll take it over to City Council. Questions and comments, Councilmember Most.
I would just like to really thank the staff for the additional funding for the Cultural Arts Council and the, with the Cultural Council and also finding a creative solution to provide even more money working with the LRC. I mean, I just think that's the kind of, that's the kind of thing we're going to have to get much better at, you know, as we go. I mean, dealing with unpredictable economic times and still unknown costs for fire recovery. So I just really appreciate the, you know, just innovative thinking that went into that. And I think it's going to really benefit our community, and so I really appreciate it. Thanks so much.
Mayor Protim Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to echo my colleagues' comments. Thank you very much to the staff. Obviously, you heard our comments and you took action on those. So, you know, this is another example of how quickly this process is going and how much we are in alignment from a policy perspective with the staff's work and the staff's intention for providing city services. Just one silly thing. So the CIP is upside down in the packet. Was that on purpose?
City Clerk?
It was late. That's all I can say.
Okay. Well, I had to turn my computer over to reread all those, but...
Control Shift minus minus.
So, so I just have a few basic comments. You know, I appreciate the picking up on the things that we, that we talked about. And Deputy City Manager Davis, you actually touched on these. The first one being the staff, staff will come back and talk about the paving plan. Do we have a timeframe? Or are we going to try to do that before we approve the budget? Or that be after? Because, oh, anyway, I'll leave it there. That's my question.
Yeah, I think it'll likely be after. We're actually, I know Director Cower is kind of putting a call out now. He's starting to put together the package for next year. They start that pretty early. So I'm not sure if it'll be before the end of the year.
I would, after budget adoption.
Yeah. After budget adoption, likely.
Okay. And will that discussion include a PCI analysis of the pavement? All right. So, you know, I know that Director Cower is on this call or on this meeting. You know, that's something that I think only... You know, that's something that I think only two of us on council have been exposed to. So that might be an opportunity for people to understand this PCI process and what the city does. But I expect that once we do that, the major arteries that we have that these trucks have been, we're going to be seeing a lot more damage. Regarding the Parks and, Parks Professional Services for the management plan, and I don't know who I should direct this to, but the question I have there is, would that be integrated with asset management tools we have now that we're currently using in public works?
Yes, is the short answer. Our attempt is going to be to align with Lucidity and fall into the same process.
All right, well, that's the short and correct answer, as far as I'm concerned. Good, so I will move beyond that one. The, you know, I want to make a note on the general fund chart we have on page 141. And what it's really showing is in 2028, based upon what we know now, and I know we're conservative on the revenue side, but I think we're less conservative on the expense side. And, you know, this is just pointing out that I think we'll be below target when we get to 2028, especially when we talk about the pavement thing. That is my opinion, and I have nothing else other than an opinion on that right now. And on page 146, we start talking about the consolidated utilities. You know, one of the things that I struggle with when I look at this is, this is a major enterprise that has projects that go beyond the six-year scope that we look at with the general fund. And, you know, as we know from the finance meetings with the combined utility responsibility, we go out, we're going to be much closer to the target fund balance for that when we go beyond 2028. And I think that when we go through this budget cycle again, I would like to see an enterprise perspective match the enterprise, and in this case, it would be a much longer cycle. And the last question I have was, I had brought this up before about the reductions in the police FTE, and wondering how you were justifying that based upon the KPI information. And I haven't seen that as part of this, and are you still intending to cut the police FTE?
Yeah, so we, part of our, you know, process we had to go through based on what was submitted for the budget, which included the overall wage and benefit increases, both in this year as well as in future years, when you project that out, was to really look at our, where, you know, where we can make reductions. That's obviously the largest impact to our budget, and it compounds over time. And so when we looked at what kind of, you know, options there were to manage that in the long term, so that we could ensure that we would have a balanced, balanced budget moving forward, we were looking at our current vacancies and our current, the current status of our positions. We didn't feel that we wanted to make staff cuts, and, and so we really were kind of looking at what has been open, what are, do we kind of have to have to maintain our current levels of service? And so that's what we looked at. And so that's where we decided this is an area where we have some vacancies that have been open for quite some time, and we've been operating with this level of service. You know, I think that's certainly an area where we know there's a high need in the community, and that the community has, you know, expectation around our community policing. And so I think it's an area we're going to need to continue to monitor and see how, you know, we can maintain those services with our current, you know, levels of staffing and the benefits we're providing.
So when we introduced the concept of program budgeting, it was really using data to determine staffing and so forth. So, you know, that, to me, I understand the concept, well, we've, we've had less staff, and we're still operating, should we continue with that? But that tells me we may need to readjust our measurements, and if we're going to use data to make these decisions and use the KPIs, you know, in a, as a program management tool, I think that it's important that those match. And I feel like we're maybe saying that they don't match right now. I don't, I don't know. But the last thing I'll say on the budget is.
Mayor Protem Maloney, I think City Manager Durbin wanted to just say something.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
That's not a problem. I asked DCM Davis to address that, because she did most of the heavy lifting on that. But I actually have a broader concern across the board with all of our employees. If we want to remain competitive and attract the best talent we can to this organization, you know, we have 2% and 4% in for COLA and Merit, CPI and Merit, and that's not what the market's been seeing this year. But to the same point, we had to pull some things back. So I'm concerned as we look forward about the whole organization in terms of employees and being competitive and so forth. So just kind of on a higher level, I share your concern.
Well, I mean, that's, that's a kind of awareness we need to have, and, you know, if we need to adjust measurements and talk about service levels and even services being provided, I'd like to see it being done on a programmatic perspective. So, but my closing remark with this is, I'm very pleased where we're at, and I do have one last comment after everybody's done with their particular comments, Mayor. So thank you.
Other folks have comments? Councilmember Dickinson?
Looking through it, I couldn't quite find, so if you can help me with my ignorance here, do we have any sort of estimate of what we think the bag tax revenue is going to be for this year, for next year, for the following year? Do we have, do we have any sort of guestimates at what we'll be pulling in there? And then, I just, I didn't see it anywhere in, is that, did I miss it anywhere? Is that built inside of something? Obviously, these are big numbers, so maybe it's part of a subcategory or something.
Yeah, I think, I can, I think I have the estimates, but I don't know that they're called out specifically in here, so.
Do you think they're buried, and I apologize for not giving you warning on this question, but.
Yeah.
Do you think they're buried within a line item, or they're just not included because it's the first time we're ever getting it and we just don't have any?
No, I think they're probably within a line item.
I think our Finance Committee Chair would like to comment. Mayor Protem Maloney?
I was just going to say that somebody had their hand up who probably has information for us. We did discuss this in Finance Committee, I believe it was two or three months ago, with projections, those numbers.
I'm just not seeing the hand.
She put her hand back down. It was Kayla.
Is that our Sustainability Director?
Yeah.
Hi there. Yes, so, hi there. After quarter three remittance, which I believe the deadline was just a few days ago for that, we're at 120,000 in revenue.
Okay. And I don't know if you're also the right person to ask if that's, if that is included in here in our budget, or if that maybe isn't included yet in our budgets.
I suspect it might be in with sales tax, but we'll confirm that.
If we can turn it over to our Finance Director, Kevin Watson.
Kevin in the room?
Yes.
Sure, yes. We've recently increased the amount for the, for the annual projection, so for 2023, we're currently projecting 200,000. The third quarter bag tax isn't due until October 20th, so we're still waiting, we're still waiting for that. So we do think that we're going to get more. For the first two quarters, we got a little bit over $100,000. So we've added $200,000 for '23 and $200,000 estimate for '24. It's a separate line item. We don't call that out because there's really no year-over-year increases in that big estimate table. So I hope that answers your question. I'll be happy to answer anything else.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Great, I appreciate that. Yeah, so I'm happy to see the decarbonization budget line there in this memo. And of course, based, based on some recent emails, we've gotten other things, you know, curious if, if, you know, staff feels, I'm sure you've received the emails as well, like if our current level of FTE funding for sustainability is going to allow us to do the work we need to do, or if there's more FTE funding within that $265,000 budget, like, are we addressing that at all? Or, you know, do we feel like we're appropriately staffed to do what we're aiming to do?
I would love to hire a lot more people across the board, but with our conservative approach, that's, there's a conflict there. The 265,000 is for a consulting contract, so that'll be a consultant coming in, providing a lot of support to our current staff as far as decarbonization, if you will. So that definitely adds capacity, moving that ball forward. And other, other than saying there's a lot of places that a lot of people would like to add staff, that the, we're at a place where we need to be conservative, is my response. But it's up, it's, you know, it's your budget, too, so.
Yeah, so I'm just trying, so I'm understanding that part, that 265 is actually for humans doing work on our decarbonization plan and sustainability. You may not be an actual Louisville employee, but it's a lot of money being spent on that resource for that purpose.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And all the departments will be involved to the question, or the comment earlier, all the departments across the organization will be involved in that work, so this is across the whole organization.
Sorry, that's all I have.
Other folks? Councilmember Fahey?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'll continue on with the sustainability questions. I understand that we probably can't commit to hiring a new staff person right now, but when we, when we have the consultant group here, I'd like to make sure that there's a huge emphasis on including the question of sustainability in every purchase, in every process throughout the city. And examples could be, like, when we buy a new city vehicle, it should be an electric vehicle. If we're changing out the HVAC system, it should be to electric or at least carbon-free. Even, you know, the lawn mowers at the golf course can be electric. They even have remote control ones now, I saw. One, that one was really kind of interesting. So I just want to make sure that sustainability is something that every financial and process decision that the city makes, sustainability is a huge component of that, just like we're trying to get EDI issues to be included in every decision. I think sustainability needs to be there also. Thank you.
Any other comments from folks? Very good. I just want to add my thanks for all the work that's gone into this document, from community members providing suggestions and feedback, and giving us so much guidance and direction, and from staff for putting all the effort into making sure that we have a strong budget and a balanced budget and address our highest priority needs. So thank you for weighing all of those things. I just had one question. We have had some recent meetings around ensuring that we are providing our part-time employees appropriate benefits, that they have access to time off, and we talked to some about the family program. Does our budget reflect our, I heard from staff, we're working on improving our own internal leave potentially, and I wondered if our budget reflects our plan to increase benefits for our part-time employees?
At this point, we don't have anything specific in the budget related to that, because we haven't finalized that conversation yet. So that, that could potentially be a budget amendment, depending on what the program really looks like as it comes together. But it's definitely something that we're committed to working on.
From my perspective, whether, I'm not, I don't feel an urgency around whether it needs to be included in the first draft or second draft, but I do sense an urgency on addressing the benefits for our part-time employees. So whether that's included when we adopt it on the, in the November meeting, or if it comes back as an amendment, we just want to underscore that our part-time employees are really important to us, and that we want to ensure the benefits package is more than competitive, that we're providing good benefits for our part-time folks, too.
Yeah, thank you. I agree. We agree. We'll get there.
Awesome. Any other comments from folks before we, Mayor Protem Maloney, wrap it up for us?
Thank you, and thank you for your comment. I noticed that everybody was nodding their head, so I think from a policy level, people on council agree with you, and of course, the city manager agrees as well. So whether that's something that gets done in the next week, or it's a budget amendment, I think it's a direction that has strong support. One thing I forgot to mention was, I do very much appreciate, you know, looking at the golf course fund balances, and one of the things that we had done with that is we had a renewal replacement program for that as well. And because of, I guess, COVID and all sorts of reasons, the golf course has done really well, and so the golf course can fund the renewal and replacement this cycle. And that's something that, you know, the general fund always backstops it, but when a pseudo-enterprise can fund their renewal replacement, that, that is something I think is really important to note. The last comment, I guess, and I guess like, I like to have a discussion here, but we have another meeting scheduled next Tuesday. I'm not sure what we talk about it, just because we've gone through a number of cycles, and just for discussion, we could cancel next week's meeting unless we have a reason to have more discussion. That's up to us, because we do have next week's meeting, and then we have the meeting where we approve the budget. So I would propose that we consider canceling next week's meeting, because it seems like we've exhausted our discussion. Just a thought.
I just asked the city manager before we do that, if there were any things you were hoping to present that you haven't been able to. I know there were some updates that you explained to us today that weren't included from a calculus perspective, so I didn't know if you wanted to use that time, or if you'll just come back at the final hearing.
No, I think this will give us more time to make sure we have a very polished project, or product for you on the November meeting.
Great. Are folks okay with that? That sounds like there's consensus that we don't need to have that additional meeting, but to the members of the public, please continue to send in your email comments, and hopefully you see that they've been incorporated as we go along and taken very seriously. So please do continue to reach out if you have other comments that you'd like us to consider as part of the budget. Mayor Protem Maloney, were you finished? I didn't want to catch you off.
I was, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other final comments? All right. Thank you so much. I'll close the public hearing. And I don't think we have to take action this evening. I think we've given good direction. And so that will take us to our next agenda topic, which is our executive session, and I will turn it over to our city attorney, Kathleen Kelly, to introduce the topic for us this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. As noted on the meeting agenda, the mayor's requesting an executive session for the purpose of discussing real property acquisitions and dispositions pursuant to Section 5-2C of the Home Rule Charter and CRS Section 2464024A, specifically as to appraisals and other value estimates and strategy. Prior to entertaining any motion, the city clerk will read a statement required by the city code.
It is the policy of the city to conduct public business in meetings open to the public. While in executive session, it is inappropriate to take straw votes, keep minutes, or make any final decisions. It is the duty of each council member to ensure executive sessions are conducted in strict compliance with this ordinance, state and federal law, and any applicable provisions of the state and federal constitutions. If at any time the scope, nature, or parameter of this executive session goes beyond the publicly stated topic, it is the responsibility of the city council to terminate and cease any further deliberation within the executive session and return to the public meeting. Only those topics described in city ordinances may be discussed in an executive session. Those topics are summarized as follows. Where federal or state law requires the information being discussed remain confidential. Certain personnel matters involving only employees directly appointed by the city council or other personnel matters upon request of the city manager or mayor. Consideration of water rights and real property acquisitions and dispositions, but only as to appraisals, value estimates, and strategy. And legal consultation with an attorney representing the city with respect to pending litigation.
Regarding the authority for the executive session, Section 5-2C authorizes an executive session for the purpose of discussing real property acquisitions and dispositions, but only as to appraisals and other estimates of value and strategy. An executive session for this purpose is also authorized under the Open Meetings Law, CRS Section 2464024A. The request tonight involves discussion of a request for the city to accept ownership and maintenance of certain outlots within a subdivision.
Thank you, everyone. I move we go into executive session for the purpose of discussing real property acquisitions and dispositions, and the executive session also includes City Manager Jeff Durbin, Deputy City Manager Megan Davis, Parks, Recreation, and Open Space Director Adam Blackmore, Planning and Building Safety Director Rob Zaccaro, and City Attorney Kathleen Kelly.
Second.
Thank you. Councilmember Lay, did you have a comment?
No, I was just moving.
Oh, thank you. And so we'll have a roll call vote on the motion. Mayor Solzman? Yes. Mayor Protem Maloney?
Yes.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Councilmember Most?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahey?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. And so we will go into executive session at this time, and as soon as we're done, we'll come back into open session and discuss how it went. come back into open session and discuss how it went. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. While we were in executive session, I'll turn it over to our city attorney to report on executive session.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, as noted on the meeting agenda, the executive session was for the purpose of discussing real property acquisitions and dispositions, and the city council had such discussion.
Thank you, everyone. So at this time, I think we should give direction to the city manager to develop a procedure to deal with HOA outlots or small outlots that folks may offer to us so that the staff is able to Thank you, everyone. So at this time, I think we should give direction to the city manager to develop a procedure to deal with HOA outlots or small outlots that folks may offer to us so that the staff is able to respond proactively when people reach out, that if there are small outlots or smart parcels of land that HOA is responsible for, that the city's not interested in taking over responsibility for those pieces of property at this time. Would anyone like to add anything to the direction? And then just the last piece of direction will be that, you know, we have an active request from an HOA if the city staff could draft a letter to the HOA, just letting them know that we're not interested. We'll work together offline, if that's okay with everybody. I'll work with city staff to get the contact info and everything like that. Does that sound good? All right. Anything else from folks on this topic this evening? All right, seeing none, that takes us to our city attorney's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no report this evening.
That takes us to council comments, committee reports, and identification of future agenda items. I just wanted to let folks know Deputy City Manager Davis and I went to the CML Policy Committee, and we were successful in conjunction with Superior in getting CML Policy Committee to put on our permanent legislative policy for consideration at the summer review insurance reform topics as we identified at our joint meeting with Superior. So that was awesome. It was not unanimous, so people will have to stay paying attention at those policy committee meetings because it was a split vote. But for now, the group agreed that they would work in the summer of next year on adding it permanently to our policy, and that they would, CML staff would be able to take position on legislation next session if it should arise, and they'll bring it back to policy committees each time because it was split. So we'll have to be diligent following up with those meetings in the future. Councilmember Dickinson.
Thank you, Mayor. In light of some recent emails and concerns and even pending petitions, I was wondering if council might support a future agenda item to have staff come back with a moratorium on any new gas stations for at least a year until we've had a chance to analyze the impact of new gas stations on our community. I'm just wondering if you guys might support that.
So we can't have a discussion on this topic at this time, but are there four people who want to add this to the agenda, and if there are, I guess I would ask what you would like to move off the agenda, or if you want to wait until the December work plan meeting to add it, because it's October 18th. So they're all appropriate. I just need for, we just need to give clear direction to staff as to whether this has got to come back ahead of or after that, and a moratorium is urgent, so I understand in any way you want to go.
Yeah, I think, I think my hope is that we don't get new applications for additional gas stations without having an opportunity to have had a conversation around their impact and what our overall strategy is, so I just kind of wanted that to, again, and it's complicated in this moment, trying to get it on the agenda to have a conversation.
For sure.
About it, but yeah.
Councilmember Lay.
I wasn't going to address that issue.
Okay. So are there four people who would like to put a moratorium on the agenda, a moratorium on new gas stations on the agenda? Mayor Proton Maloney.
That sounds like a conclusion. Are we, I would entertain a discussion if we can decide what we take off the agenda, but I'm not willing to agree to a conclusion.
I apologize. That was my imprecise use of language, not.
I understand. I just want to, yeah, thank you.
Sorry for framing it wrong. The point I was trying to say, would people want to add a discussion about a moratorium on petrol stations to a future agenda item? And Mayor Proton Maloney, I think your point was, you're one of the four votes, and then you're looking on the advanced agenda about what you'd like to remove. Is that what I heard you say?
Yeah, let's take the budget off. I, you know, honestly, I think that I respect the request, but I struggle with what we would take off, because I see this as more than a 20-minute discussion. You know, I think if we, you know, as we talk about this, there might be conditions around that. To do something that's black and white, I guess I just pause. So I think if we're going to do this, we need to have a rich discussion. Staff needs to prepare us for the ins and outs of that. So it would require a big move off of the advanced agenda. That's, that's my point.
The city clerk wants to add something in, and then it looks like a couple more council members.
Just as an informational item, I was delivered today a citizens initiative to call a special election on this topic. So they have submitted a petition. I am reviewing it. Once it's approved, they will start collecting signatures. So just as informational background for you.
So how would that affect our timing as far as when we would potentially talk about it?
I'm statutorily bound to move it forward within five days to get them respond to their petition. After that, they can start collecting signatures. They have 180 days once the petition's approved.
And just a point of clarification, the petition is for a moratorium on?
Remove it as a use allowed in the town, in city, within two and a half miles of any existing station and take it out of, as a use by right in most areas.
That's more than a moratorium.
Yes. So my suggestion is that the moratorium is more of even like a consent agenda sort of pause on, again, just new applications while we do exactly what you talked about, which is a longer conversation about the, so I can entertain a shorter, we could talk about a shorter moratorium or what have you, but just pressing that pause button while we figure out how to put this conversation into our work plan and into our timing, but, but while we're thinking about how to take all that information in, that we're not exacerbating the problem that we're already facing. And so just trying to bring that back is sort of an emergency ordinance, not really a long conversation about it, so that it gives us time to have a longer conversation about it, is the intention of that. So if we could entertain a different timeline or different length of moratorium or all those things, I'm willing to hear any of that as we move forward.
To the attorney, Kelly.
Well, I was just going to remind council that a moratorium has to be adopted by ordinance, and typically that would not go on the consent agenda, so just for your planning and scheduling purposes.
So I just want to caution, I, this is, it's appropriate to talk about whether we have the capacity to agenda the topic, and I just would, and everybody's done a great job of that so far. I just want to remind everybody to confine the discussion to whether we want to agenda, whether and how we want to agenda this. Councilmember Most.
My question may be beyond that, sorry.
Mayor Proton Maloney.
So I, I think this warrants a rich discussion, as I've said before, and I don't want to rush that, but, you know, looking at the calendar, Monday, November 7th, we have an ADU discussion. That's an overview. I don't know how long that will take, but that's a possibility for discussion. We would have to make that a special meeting, though, if we ask the staff to come back with an ordinance at some point in time. So that's, that's a possibility. I don't know how long we think the ADU discussion will take and whether it makes any sense to have this at the same time, but I don't see any other places unless we really cut stuff out of the rest of the calendar for the year.
So I, what I heard you just talk about is different than what I had been hearing. So I heard you talking about having a meeting to talk about whether we should put in place a moratorium or not, and what I thought I heard Councilmember Dickinson proposing was bringing forward a moratorium ordinance for our consideration, which I, so I think those things are slightly different.
I think, I think you're absolutely right. They're different. To me, I'm not seeing this as black and white, and I think that there's some grays in here that we should be discussing. So it, it can't, I don't think it should just be yes or no. It should be maybe as there's a conditional aspect to it, but that requires a good discussion and us understanding what we're doing.
Councilmember Lay, it looks, your hand's just been uniformly up, so I'm not trying to call on you more often than you'd like, but it looked like you may have comment on this point now.
Well, in part, one of my comments, let me just jump ahead. I, there was a discussion that we had at Finance Committee last night, and my suggestion was that we add to one of our meetings an agenda item, which I think is, you know, it sort of has to do with what we're talking about right now. We're at least potentially pretty full. The agenda item had to do with having somebody from the assessor's office come and talk about the abatement process really briefly, because I thought the discussion yesterday was very useful. I think people whose homes were destroyed or damaged would similarly find that discussion incredibly useful and probably are at the point where they may have a little more bandwidth or energy, really emotional energy, to focus on that. So, you know, I, that's really important. I, I think this issue is important, too. I, I'm a little concerned about kind of, sort of, in some ways, I think that, you know, I don't want to get too much into the detail, but it's sort of coming and asking for an ordinance, I think is way different than just having a discussion, which I think it sounds like there's agreement on. I worry a little bit about how much work we're going to put staff to, to have to come up with information that's going to help us, especially when, I guess, there's an initiative that is going to probably result in a lot of public education about it. And just simply, you know, I mean, that's, that initiative process is for a result. It seems, I don't know, aren't we sort of granting the result that the folks who want the initiative to go forward and be successful, aren't we granting that or we're discussing doing that? And I don't know, that seems odd. I'm not suggesting it's not appropriate. I'm just saying it's odd to me that we might do that. I think the other part that makes me wonder is doing this from the dais, as we're kind of doing. I just don't know enough about moratoria. I really would love a tutorial from the city attorney about that and the sorts of things that we need to be considering and thinking about, because, you know, you don't like to incur legal fees for litigation that might be brought by somebody who says that moratoria are contrary to law, where this moratorium is. And, you know, initiatives are a different story, because I think they have a special place, but I don't know whether, I think a discussion would be, a really fulsome discussion on this would be very good. I just don't know where to put it.
Director Isaac Carroll.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment on the, the purpose of a moratorium in a case like this. It isn't to actually discuss or draft regulations. So the citizens initiative that was submitted proposes a set of regulations that they've drafted. So the purpose of the moratorium is just to put a pause on applications, and then that gives staff and the city council time to study the issue. So the, if you were to actually look at the moratorium ordinance, it wouldn't be substantive to any potential regulations. It would be simply to stop applications for PUDs or GDPs or any application for an actual development of a gas station, and then city council could, you know, over the six months or year or whatever the moratorium length is, city council could then consider, if they want to regulate it, you know, in any manner, which could, you know, that could have some bearing on, or it may not have bearing on the initiative that was submitted as well, but it gives the city council an opportunity to decide if they want to regulate gas stations and not have applications in the meantime. I don't know if the city attorney wants to add anything.
Not unless there are questions. I mean, for purposes of scheduling.
So I just want to, so normally we are in agreement, but occasional, on occasion, when we're scheduling, I've asked for a vote, and I, I know that sometimes makes us feel bad because we have to take different positions, but if I could have Councilmember Dickinson sort of frame our, the rest of our conversation with a vote, and then people can speak for or against whatever he makes as a motion, so if you'll just frame what you've proposed as a motion, then we can, people can vote yes or no on it, and if we get four, we can take action.
Yeah, so I don't do this very often on this part of the agenda, but yeah, my motion is that we add an agenda item, asking staff to bring back a temporary moratorium on new applications for gas stations while we have time to study the regulation we may or may not want to put into place.
There are second on adding that new agenda item. I will second it. Is there any discussion from folks for or against the motion? I saw Councilmember Brown hasn't had a chance. Did you still want to talk now that I've made him frame a motion?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you. I, I appreciate Councilmember Dickinson's motion and his, you know, thoughtful discussion on this. I am very concerned about expanding our fossil fuel infrastructure in Colorado, in Louisville, in Colorado, too. And I'm very interested, although I have not read their initiative, I'm very interested in what the citizens are proposing. I'm concerned about the framing of this conversation in that it, I'm concerned that the council is trying to circumvent a citizens initiative and citizens, citizens process. So that's my, that's where I'm at, at this point in time.
Other folks want to comment? Councilmember Dickinson.
Yeah, I would say my intention is to, I think their process is going to take a while, and a lot could happen between today and when their process is completed, and so whether or not this ends up circumventing theirs or not, what it does is allow them or us time, their, either their initiative goes through or our regulation goes through, but in the interim, while this long process of a special election does or doesn't happen, that, that action isn't taken in between. So the intention isn't to circumvent, the intention is to protect or, or allow for that process to move forward without other applications coming in ahead of it.
Not seeing any other, Mayor Proton Maloney.
Yeah, I, I appreciate where Councilor Dickinson's coming from, and, and, you know, and I, I respect that. I just think that we need to understand this better. You know, I think we, if we're going to take and create an ordinance that's a moratorium, I think we need more information and more discussion and more contemplation of this issue. Going straight to ordinance just seems too quick for me, and so I was trying to propose a fairly quick time that we could have a discussion, and we could give a direction if we made that a special meeting, maybe to do exactly what you're talking about. So, you know, really, that's, I can't think that we're going to have applications in the next two weeks, right? And that's kind of the timeframe we're working with. So what I'm talking about is maybe a couple of weeks for more process, more discussion, so we have a better understanding of this. And I think there may be some gray to this that we need to be aware of and discuss. So that's my perspective. So I would vote no, just because I'd like to see an additional process step.
If my motion fails, I would support your, not yet, motion, but I would support your direction if, if, if my motion fails.
Councilmember Lay.
This is interesting. I, I'm halting mostly because I'm trying to think of the implications. I mean, not that I want to raise yet another really controversial subject, but, you know, we could say, gee, maybe we need to come back with an ordinance that says no more gas pipelines into Louisville while we figure it out. I, I wonder how many sorts of, and maybe that raises different issues, but I wonder how many issues we want to kind of put the, in some ways, put the finger on the scale on because of, of this. And, and that's one of them, and there's all kinds of, each of us could probably come up with one that we might want to do this, and I'm not sure that's a good way to govern. Not speaking one way or another. I just, I don't have enough information, and that's why. I think I, I support the, the view that the Mayor Proton just described, because I think I understand it better, as Councilmember Lou used to talk about being the bearer of small brain, and she really wasn't, but I'll, I think I can, I'm having a hard time wrapping my mind around. But I'll, I think I can, I'm having a hard time wrapping my mind around this as a method of governing. And I don't think it's going to be, I think, if, if, we do have the discussion that Mayor Protem is talking about, if we have that fairly soon, I think then it becomes less critical.
Councilmember Fahy?
Thank you. Yeah, I'm leaning toward Mayor Protem also, and I'm wondering, well, first question for staff is, would it be possible if we did not cancel the meeting next Tuesday night, would you have time to bring back enough information for us to have the discussion in a week?
So, writing an ordinance with a moratorium isn't overly complicated, but preparing a well-rounded dialogue around all this, this issues would take more time. And by next week, I would say, I don't think we could effectively pull that off.
Okay. What about by the time of the ADU study session?
I mean, is the suggestion taking off ADUs and then replacing this? Or is it?
Or do both.
Adding on?
Yeah.
I'm going to ask you what you think about that.
I guess, I guess, question for a little clarification on expectation is, do you want a, do you want a discussion about the moratorium or do you want a discussion about potential regulations? Because the, you know, again, a discussion about the moratorium is relatively easy where a discussion about potential regulations would be a pretty heavy lift in a couple of weeks with other things going on.
So, I'll just speak in favor of adding it to the agenda. I think that, I think the intent of what Councilmember Dickinson has proposed is actually completely aligned with what I heard Mayor Protem Maloney and Councilmember Lay say. I think the intent of what I heard being proposed is that we would, the moratorium would allow time for staff and council and the community to have a contemplative discussion without more applications coming in. And I understand the sentiment that it seems unlikely, but I think that's the point of a moratorium is you just don't know what applications will come in when. So, it puts a pause on accepting applications, so the community has time to have a discussion. I also appreciate the comment that I don't, I actually, I actually think that it's unrelated to the initiative, because in one case, you're saying you want to do a study to understand it, and I think the initiative is a proposal that council will have an opportunity to, if they collect enough signatures, to decide whether or not council wants to just adopt it rather than go to a special election. So, I think they're actually two separate tracks. But I think, I actually think the least burdensome thing for staff is to do a moratorium. And then, and then council can have a discussion in the work plan as to whether or not this is a priority to write an ordinance to change our current philosophy around gasoline service stations. So, those are my comments. Other folks? Councilmember Most?
Can we do a short-term moratorium? Like?
I think when, if, if there's support for folks to bring back a moratorium, the length of time is something that would be easily debated from the dais during the conversation. Any final comments from folks? Councilmember Brown?
I just appreciate your comments, Mayor. I appreciate Councilmember Dickinson's clarification on his intent here. I also, I think I, I support Councilmember Dickinson's moratorium, bringing back a moratorium in the future.
Anybody else with final comments? All right. City Clerk Mies?
Is there a specific date you wanted considered?
So, I think that is something to ask staff. So, let's first see if there's support, because we don't actually know that. And then if there is, let's schedule a date that is an appropriate length of time away for staff to be able to draft the ordinance. City Clerk Mies, could we have a roll call vote? Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Lay?
Was that a no? Okay. Councilmember Fahy?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Maloney?
No.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Mayor Stolzmann?
Yes.
Councilmember Most?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Dickinson, would you have a proposal for a date? Or city staff, would you have a proposal for a date?
So, I?
November 1st. That's pretty good. Is that, if that's enough time, it's?
That's, that's pretty quick. But can we, can we say something like, let's shoot for November 1st and give us a couple of weeks if we need a little more time?
City Attorney Kelly, is that appropriate?
Yes, I guess I just want to understand what's coming back to the council, because if it's just the moratorium ordinance for consideration, which is, you know, as has been described, just pressing the pause button so that a full discussion of the topic can be undertaken by the council and the community, that's a pretty straightforward ordinance. And so, you know, I guess, I think that that could be prepared for the council pretty quickly. You know, our office would draft it. We're happy to prioritize that and get it to you as soon as possible.
November 1st?
November 1st or, I mean, the October 25th special meeting that was canceled.
I'm finding November 1st.
Is November 1st or Mayor Protem Maloney?
You know, I'm concerned that we're going to have a lot of public comment, obviously, if we already have an initiative, you know, forming. If we're going to do this right, that just seems too fast. So, you know, I, I don't think we should just be doing something this quickly without solid discussion. And if we don't schedule enough time to allow for public comment and for us to understand it, that would disappoint me. And I think part of our public process is doing this the right way, so.
So, if we agenda it for November 1st, you would still be able to make those, that case on November 1st that there would be additional meetings needed to take action? Like, if it will be ready by the, I'm just struggling.
I'm sorry, I didn't actually hear you.
Sorry, I was just, I was trying to, so, I understand the words that you said, but I'm just struggling to schedule it consistent with how the last vote went and just be fair to everybody. So, I think that if we schedule it, if it's, can be ready on the 1st, then we can have the discussion on the 1st to the merits of the point that you just raised as to whether that is appropriate to adopt at that time or if more time is needed for public process.
Well, we're not talking about an emergency ordinance. I didn't hear that.
No, I didn't hear that either.
Right, so this would be a first, first reading?
First reading.
So?
Well, I actually don't know for a moratorium. I actually don't know how the staff would draft it.
Well, you know, typically, a moratorium ordinance, if there is sufficient support of the governing body, would be done by emergency ordinance, because the whole point of a moratorium is to press the pause button then and not provide notice to the community that, you know, 30 days after publication following second reading, these applications won't be accepted any longer, so get them in now. But, you know, we can draft, it's very easy to present in the packet on November 1st an emergency ordinance and a non-emergency ordinance, and that can be another topic of your discussion if you decide to move forward at all with a moratorium.
You know, I'm just shocked that this was brought up as a future agenda item, and now we're talking about an emergency ordinance on something that we're not prepared to discuss or have not been prepared to discuss. So, that's why I voted no. I didn't vote no because it's necessarily a bad idea, but if we're going to approve a emergency ordinance November 1st, I'm going to be voting no because I think we're unprepared to have this, this level of discussion.
So, I look forward to the robust discussion, but it does seem like, given the direction that the vote went and the ability for staff to prepare it by the 1st, that that seems consistent. So, I'm not trying to create an unlevel playing field or schedule something out of order. So, I think we'll be able to have that full debate when it comes back on the 1st, and I look forward to hearing everybody's different perspective. Any other future agenda items? It sounded like Councilmember Lay, you might have another topic. You wanted to have potentially, or a community meeting that you potentially wanted to have?
I just wanted to add an item for the agenda, and I've spoken with this, I don't, I don't want to interfere with the process that I think has already started, because the city manager, I think, was going to think about how to have maybe a brief or abbreviated version of what the assessor did yesterday be provided, really as a public service, the people's homes were damaged or destroyed, so that they come forward timely with information that meaning that their assessed value is less than otherwise through an abatement process. So, I think it would be good. I don't know how long that would take. I mean, I would bet, you know, it's probably one of those things where the questions would be greater in number than the, or the time for questions would be lengthier than just the presentation, but I don't know whether the city manager has thought to have on that.
We haven't had a chance to circle back on that. The concept here is that there is an abatement process in January that property owners who lost their homes might benefit from hearing more information about. And there's a number of different ways we can do that, and there was discussion at Finance Committee about, does it make sense to do something here at council that's brief? Or are there different ways that we can communicate that out? Either way, I think it's a good thing to communicate out. We haven't had a chance to come up with a plan just yet on it. If I recall correctly, the two meetings in January are relatively light at the moment. And on that, I was, I'd also like to propose that the January 3rd, which is the first Tuesday, that we shift things back a week. No? We can't?
We have to have two regular meetings per month, and we've already?
But we have five Tuesdays.
We try to ignore, we try to ignore those, so nothing gets scheduled.
Okay, I'm just concerned, I'm just concerned, I'm just concerned about what kind of packet we put together between Christmas and New Year's. What? All right. You're on it. Never mind.
Meredith's just like, I already have it done. Code of Ethics is in there. It's all ready to go. Post, meeting posting places.
Check.
Councilmember Brown?
Thanks. I really appreciate Councilmember Lay bringing this forward. I think it's an important thing for folks to be aware of. I also know that attendance at our meetings is not always the greatest, depending on what the topic is. And so, I'm interested in seeing what the staff come back with, whether it's like a utility bill mailing or something along those lines. So, I think it's a great idea and really, it was a really good presentation from the city, or, sorry, the county assessor to Councilmember Lay's point. So, you know, appreciate the opportunity to see what staff brings back.
Mayor Protem Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor. City Clerk, did we record the finance meeting?
Yes.
So, one potential is we have that presentation recorded. That would be one way we could make it available. So, that's just a thought, because I, I would imagine the presentation's going to be the same. Now, you're, what you're going to have in that is the questions from the Finance Committee during the course of that, but maybe that will help clarify some things. So, that maybe is a tool that we could consider making available. And then it would be available maybe on the website and in different forums, so, just a thought.
Councilmember Fahy?
Thank you. On a slightly different topic, I was conversing with a group of former neighbors, also fire victims, and one question that came up was, one of the neighbors had just been issued a citation for parking a horse trailer in front of her house and not moving it frequently enough. And so, they started talking about all of the various code violations that could happen, and someone mentioned, winter is coming. Are we going to be required to shovel our sidewalks? And if not, how will we know that we don't have to? And so, I don't know what the process would be for clarifying that for the residents, and not just for the enclave, but all the fire victims that, or if we have sufficient staff in public works in snow plowing, they could just go around and zip around sidewalks?
That's a great question. I'm sure staff can work on getting back to folks and communicating out that that's a great thing. And I know the staff has spent a lot of time trying to figure out how to coordinate all the construction, because you could potentially imagine how some of that could impact one person's project over another. So, I'm sure they'll get back to us as quickly as possible with a response.
If I could get an address from you about the horse trailer, I'd appreciate that. Offline.
Offline would be perfect. Just a quick update on Denver Regional Council of Governments. We've been in our subregional forum process, so every four years, there's the Transportation Improvement Program, which you'll often heard referred to as TIP program, where we talk about funding. And the first phase was for regional projects and of multimodal nature. And then the second phase was for local projects of multimodal nature, and that was where council, council member, sorry, I just demoted you. Deputy City Manager Megan Davis successfully wrote the application for us with the rest of the staff for our projects that we were awarded with Highway 42 and some other things, so that's awesome. And then round three is regional in nature but general projects, not multimodal, it can be anything. And in round three, the county submitted a Highway 7 bus starter service project, a Highway 7 project of construction nature, and 119, some improvements on 119, I think, was the third. And so, those will be scored and reviewed, but as part of that, round three, they asked that we would set aside funding from round four, which is for all of our projects, off the top. So, normally, in the fourth round, all the projects would be scored, and we award the best projects funding, but they wanted us to pre-award their projects funding without knowing what all the other projects were. So, I advocated against it for a number of reasons. One, I think that the best project should receive the funding, and we don't know what, you know, we'll submit, other people will submit, and how they play together. And then probably of more importance is that RTD has said that they cannot provide the service that the county has submitted the funding for on Highway 7. Like, they can provide service from Boulder to Lafayette, but they have no way to extend the bus service, and the county hasn't identified an operator to do the whole distance to Brighton. So, and there's not a, there's also not identified a way to fund the program after the funding runs out, so you can only do starter service with these types of dollars from the federal government. So, I just felt that there was not enough. We very well may fund these in the fourth round, but they should be scored against the other fourth round projects, against our projects, against Lafayette's and Superior's and Boulders, and see how they stack up. But I didn't prevail. So, we've set money aside in our fourth round to fund these projects, but I don't think they'll be awarded in the regional process, so I think we'll likely get to have the discussion later again anyway. That is my update. Any other updates from folks? Councilmember Dickinson?
The business forum is next Thursday, the 27th, and we're certainly hopeful that all council members will be able to attend if they're in town and able to be there. Should be a really great event, and our Congressman Jonah Goose will be in attendance, one of our speakers. So, really excited about the event and hope you can all make it.
The other committee reports? Oh, Councilmember Lay?
I just wanted to, I wanted to add one last thing, one of personal privilege about the discussion before around the abatement process. I think we can do all of the above. I am sensitive to the fact that we have had so many discussions this year about tax-related and money-related issues that the survivors and other people in town are facing. And the more information, the more ways we can get it out, the better. Even, I agree with the Mayor Protem, I agree with everybody who's talked about information that we could get out. It would be nice to have somebody from the assessor, you know, be able to answer a few questions. That would be my pitch, and I am done.
All right. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.